of the United States of America. And to look for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, I remember the words. Okay, any additions, deletions, corrections to the proposed agenda for this evening?
There is a correction on the consent agenda. It should be the December 21st meeting minutes instead of the December 7th.
So, the minutes from the meeting that was on December 21st. Any questions, comments, corrections? Good job, Kim, whoever's in. Whoever's, who does this now?
I do.
Okay, Gold Star.
Thank you.
Welcome. General, major streets, local streets, downtown development authority fund, sewer fund, water fund, equipment fund, payroll register report, and I think that's it. Yep. Entertaining motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Okay, motion by Councilmember Alec, support by President Pro Tem Dyke to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion or discussion at all? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proposed, same sign, and maybe, I keep forgetting this, tell me, we should actually note who's here. It's a roll call. Sorry about that.
President Schneider.
President.
President Pro Tem Dyke, Councilmember Alec.
Present.
Councilmember Culca.
Present.
Councilmember Glasser.
Present.
Councilmember Stuffer.
Present.
Communications for this week, back up top. Public comment, time for any item on our regular agenda. Suppose this wouldn't be an inappropriate time for this, since the first item on our regular agenda is village council vacancy. Would either of the two parties who are in the pot, so to speak, care to make any additional comments with regard to the vote that is going to be taken tonight and your candidacy? Yeah, sure.
I don't know if this is a moot point at this point, but we'll try. I don't think there's any doubt from anyone that Mr. Feldman would be a valuable asset to this council. In fact, I was struggling with whether or not to withdraw because I strongly believe that him filling this seat would be a positive for the community. But then I started thinking about what I uniquely have to offer besides my involvement in the schools, working downtown, and always having my finger on the pulse of the community, and that is my experience in local government. I don't believe there's anyone who has ever been in an elected position who hasn't been shell shocked in the beginning. No one, to my knowledge, has ever said or thought this is exactly as I expected it to be. It takes months, sometimes even years, to get your bearings. Everything you thought it would be, it really isn't, and it is a steep learning curve. You have to not only come to terms with what your authority is and what it isn't, but learn quickly to separate yourself and your personal opinions for the good of the collective. This past year, I've learned how to stay in my lane, keep the big picture in mind, not operate in the minutia. I've had to come to terms with disappointing community members who put their confidence in me by knowing that I made the best decision possible with the information I had available. I've had to be okay with knowing that if they knew the whole story, they would have probably agreed or at least understood, but I also had to be okay with knowing that they will never know the whole story. I've seen the necessity and power that comes with both dissent and consensus, and I've had to find the balance between the two. I've learned more about OMA, parliamentary procedure, and restricted revenue than I realized my brain had room for. I've had to make tough calls in allocating resources where they are most needed and can do the most good for the most amount of time, which also means taking away from something else that is equally as necessary and valuable, but would not have had the same impact per dollar. I've learned that the real work is behind the scenes, late at night, sacrificing hours to make sure you are as knowledgeable and prepared as you can be for the public, who will never even see or know what you have given up to sit at the table and feel confident in the decisions you are making. Few people will ever know the weight of responsibility that comes with this illusion of power. Whether elected or appointed, once thrown into a governing position, there's a transition time that is to be expected, yet you don't have time to prepare. Once you're in, you are expected to immediately make decisions that will impact the present and future of thousands. With this seat being less than a year term, I believe that my experience would be of great benefit. I'm not naive enough to believe that I still won't have a transition period, and I have no doubt that Mr. Feldman would do an incredible job, but I also believe my experience would be a significant help in allowing me to hit the ground running. Am I busy? I am, but you would be hard pressed to find any person who isn't. It's just about how you prioritize your time. I thrive under pressure, but I also know my limits. If I felt like I was biting off more than I could chew, I wouldn't be here, and I wouldn't ask you to give me a seat at the table if I didn't think I could offer my best. If there's anything you can be assured of, it's that I love this village, and I want to be a part of helping her succeed. Thank you.
Mr. Feldman, is there anything that you'd like to say?
Just keep it short and sweet. Pete Feldman, I know I'd be an asset to this village council. I've been here my whole life. I know how the village works. I've worked at the village. Although young, I have been involved in the village in the past. I know how DPW works here, work with the police department. I agree that she would do a very good job, but I don't believe there is a steep learning It's not all that different than running a project or a corporation, done both, one with 30,000 employees, one with 80,000 employees. This is where I'd like to give back. I live here. I believe that it's something that I can do, and it's ready to take it on and move forward with it as quickly as possible. Any questions?
Any other public comment this evening with regard to our regular agenda items? Thee none. Thank you. Okay, moving on to our regular agenda. Agenda item number one, village council vacancy, appointment, AKA election, but really appointment. So, Kim, I guess go around the table.
Culca.
Feldman.
Dyke.
Well, it's one thing both candidates, because we have two outstanding, I can't talk tonight either. We have two outstanding candidates here that we can't go wrong with. So, thank you both for your consideration. Feldman.
Glasser.
Feldman.
Stuffer.
Feldman.
Alec.
Edwards.
Schneider.
Edwards.
So, it's four for Mr. Feldman, two for Ms. Edwards.
Hey, congratulations, Mr. Feldman. Sorry, Angela. You actually would swear him in this evening, correct?
Yep.
You never see?
He'll take a seat.
And if you have to push Wayne over there.
He refuses to give up.
Feel free to do so.
Mr. Feldman, if you want.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of village council member.
Of office of village council member.
In and for the village of Elmont.
In and for the village of Elmont.
County of Lapeer and state of Michigan.
County of Lapeer and state of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, so that takes care of agenda item number one, ZBA appointment. Did have a conversation with one of our council members, because we do need to add another member to our zoning board of appeals, and it's nice if you have a volunteer. And anything you would like to say, Jim?
I'd just, to bring up to everybody else, that I was willing to step off the parks board as the council member, since Jackie is also on the parks board and can assume that role, to step over to the ZBA to fill that spot. I don't want to take on another board just because I don't want to take on more meetings, and I'm anticipating a busy year with work, and I don't want to overkill myself, even though ZBA does not do a lot of meetings and they're not long. I just, I'm going to need that extra time, I believe, to get through what I need to with work. So. Another rule, is that a motion or is that an appointment by the president and then a rat application?
The charter section quoted by our village clerk says, "appointed by village council." So, yeah, it's a council vote, but you need a motion and...
Then I will make the motion to appoint Councilmember Alec as the council representative to the ZBA board.
Motion made by President Pro Tem Dyke, supported by Councilmember Alec, to appoint Councilmember Alec to the zoning board of appeals. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Jim, you're appointed.
Another question. Jim, are you the council appointee to the park board?
Correct.
Then do we need to appoint Jackie as the...
We would have to accept his stepping down, and then council would have to appoint.
So, two more motions. Ready, set, go.
Well, Jim's going to verbalize it.
He's good at verbalizing some.
I would like to pull my, put my resignation, I guess it's the wording for removal of the council member on the parks board, effective immediately. Jackie willing to be the council representative, since she's already on the park board, because we were assuming. All right, I will make a motion that we accept Councilmember Alec's resignation as the council member appointed to the park board.
So, motion by President Pro Tem Dyke, supported by Councilmember Glasser, for the accepting, council's acceptance of the resignation of Mr. Alec from the park board. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Resignation's accepted. One more.
I'll make the motion that we appoint Jackie Culca, Councilmember Culca, as the council representative to the park board.
What's the part again? Motion by President Pro Tem Dyke, supported by Councilmember Glasser, to approve the appointment of, what are we appointing? This is for appointment to...
The council representative to the park board.
Yeah, like Tim says. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign.
Off topic, since we're discussing appointments, weren't we having issues with having a backup to the ZBA?
We don't even have three members.
And wouldn't that be something Angela might be interested in? Yeah, that would be, because we would like to get you involved, because you've been here twice now, and I think you'd be good in that capacity, so maybe get her an application at the end of the meeting.
So, the charter actually says, council member, planning commission member, and a ordinary resident. So, someone that's not an official, and so Angela would be...
Well, we already have three, so she would be the alternate member.
Who's the third?
Terry Roach.
Oh, okay.
Well, we were running into problems with that this year, so having that...
Having that alternate would be very helpful.
Here he is, off the line in his plane.
I didn't mean to go off the track, but...
No.
Good suggestion.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. And then so, presuming council would approve you, at very least as an alternate, Angela, probably would need to maintain some line of communication with Terry. You know Terry? Terry Roach, owner of Gear Master, which keeps him very busy, plus he has sick parents up north, he does a good job taking care of him. He's a busy guy, so, and he's on park board too, if I recall correctly, so, okay. So, Kim, you get Angela on the application. Thank you. Good. Okay, agenda item number three, I'm sorry.
We have to finish the vote for the appointment of Councilmember Culca. We have the motion on the table.
Oh, I thought we voted, I apologize.
Yeah, I thought we did too. Okay. But you, the motion's...
The motion was made and it was supported, but the vote wasn't done.
Mr. Dyke decided to go off topic. Any event, yeah, any further discussion on that? Approving the appointment of Ms. Culca to the council member on park board. Any further discussion on that issue? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign, unanimously approved. Can I go to agenda number three now? Cyber assessment services, quote, insurance coverage. Okay. So, did you want to make a presentation on that?
Delighted to, Mr. President. Thank you, and good evening, council members. A month ago, the subject of cybersecurity was raised at our council meeting in early December, just before Christmas. We were able to compile some quotes from vendors that are state-approved through the MyDeal system. In your packet is a summarization of those quotes that are taken directly from the MyDeal system. Three vendors that I contacted and interviewed were the Merit Network Incorporated Group out of Ann Arbor, Dewpoint, and Raymond Technology Solutions. I was very surprised by the price range that these vendors proposed for their services for a cybersecurity assessment. And in the process of contacting IT Right, because some of the vendors were asking some questions that I needed to respond to, and so I contacted our current IT support vendor, and in the conversation with the vice president of IT Right, discovered that they had actually been contracted by the state of Michigan to write the RFP for IT cyber assessment services. And in my discussions with IT Right, learned that one of the things that they were going to offer to their clients going forward was that we'd be happy to do a cybersecurity assessment for you at no cost. So, we had, you know, the three quotes that were part of your packet, and then low and behold, our current contractor has said, "We'd be happy to provide that service to you at no cost." As I indicated in my memo, in being part of the old quality assurance world at General Motors, one could say there's a potential conflict of interest of somebody auditing the system that they're responsible for maintaining, but based on the integrity of the IT Right company, the number of clients they have throughout the state of Michigan, and the fact that the state of Michigan had enough confidence in to actually write the RFP for the services, I figured it could not hurt for us to at least take advantage of a freebie. And ironically, just this afternoon, the gentleman from IT Right, who's been entrusted with performing this, because the ticket had already been written by the vice president of IT Right to provide this service to us, that we're already implementing some password protocols that'll be taking place this month as step one in the process of gearing up our system internally, so that we have better password protection, authentication going forward, et cetera, et cetera. And so, our staff is going to be apprised that over the course of the next three weeks, they're going to have to change their passwords every week, and then at the end of the month, every 90 days, they'll be required to change their passwords as well. Again, that's part of the password protocol that'll be implemented, and I'm sure it would be something that any of these other three vendors would recommend as well. But anyway, at the end of the day, it's basically a one-year process that these vendors walk you through, assess your system, make some recommendations on policies and changes that should be incorporated. They do, you know, some phishing analysis as well, too, to make sure that nobody's hitting the wrong button, if you will, on a fake email and hitting a link that could pose a problem going forward, which is where about 75% of all of the ransomware and malware gets generated anyways from bad emails. And so, I think it would be in our interest to utilize IT Right in the short term, find out where we're at several months down the road, and if we deem that's appropriate to have another outside party look at our system, that we would utilize Merit based on the rapport that I have with certain individuals in that organization, as well as the relatively modest cost that would be involved by using those folks as well. So, that's my recommendation. You know, President Schneider voiced the concern about ransomware and cybersecurity over this past year. In your packet, I was able to generate one article that just came from Government Technology that dealt with the state of Virginia and some of the issues that they were having. Earlier today, I was able to generate another summary from Government Technology, just to give you a couple of the highlights that they indicated of what's transpired in 2021. The FBI says that Cuba ransomware group has hit 49 critical infrastructure organizations, and that ransomware payments of almost $44 million had been made this past year. Back in April this year, ransomware surge is ruining lives. Cyber attacks on critical infrastructure sectors like, you'll recall Colonial Pipeline came into play, as well as the meat processing giant JBS, the Irish Health Service, and so many others. And in January, the FBI, the National Security Agency, and the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency jointly suggested that Russia was responsible for an attack against SolarWinds, a Texas-based company whose software was used by everyone from the federal government to railroads, hospitals, and major tech companies. And on a more local level, I learned over the Christmas period that the Ann Arbor Transit Authority had an attack where the most egregious issue that they're dealing with is that people cannot track the time slots for when the buses are running. And so, you know, there it is happening in downtown Ann Arbor with their transit authorities. So, government entities are getting attacked left and right, and as part of one of the concerns that I wanted to bring back to the table for your folks' consideration was whether or not you wanted to reevaluate a decision that was made this past year regarding insurance coverage for cybersecurity. To that end, I've invited our insurance agent, Dustin Drabek, from the Decker Agency, to be present to help answer some questions. In your packet was an updated quote dealing with cybersecurity coverage. My recommendation is that for what would be a very modest investment in an increase in our premium, when you look at the big picture of what's happening in the world with cybersecurity and ransomware, if we can have upwards of $1 million of coverage for certain key aspects, that at least for the next six months of our fiscal year, we're looking at a $500 investment for $1 million worth of coverage, I think that's money well spent going forward, and we can certainly reevaluate what that premium would be when the premium is updated in July of this coming year. But with that, Mr. President, if you would let us yield the floor to Dustin for any comments that he might have and his expertise on this matter.
Questions you might have. Hi, Dustin. Come on up.
As I said before, you guys, in the summer, and we talked about this after sitting down with manager Trent, I still had the same sentiment as I did when I talked with you guys. I don't think what he just said is unfounded, right? Things are picking up, creativity is taking place, and different municipalities are starting to be touched. To kind of broker on what he said, if you were ransom, okay, the package would do a threat assessment to determine which is more affordable, or which is cheaper, or which is better for the long-term claim, ransom or system failure. And that'll be conducted, so that you guys can determine and we can make a choice. Now, I have not heard, okay, and this is where the difficulty comes in. I haven't had a brother or sister or our book get hit, so I haven't sat there with you and said, 20 grand? 18 grand? And then tell you, you have an hour to decide. Okay? So, I always want to be careful and not overpromising, and that's just where I want to stand. But I will say this, and this is something I reiterated in June. This is a golf club in a bag for you to go hit the course. I'm your caddy, okay? I got the clubs ready for you. Now, you want to go bogey in every hole, that's what's going to happen. You want a birdie, I'm going to do my best to get your birdies, right? And manager Trent is correct. I mean, right now, like you said, the next six months, you can sign up $1 million for about $500. It's prorated, because we're already six months into the policy. When we come out come July, I actually had a conversation with my underwriter, because, you know, this is getting into, going to be, third year come July, and so they are, you know, allegedly, you know, seeing some increases on the premium, but nothing drastic where it would force us to sit there and say, "Do we want to do this again for another year?" I think it's something, like I said, that it's difficult for me to sit there and say, "Do it. Do it," because of the size of the village, you know? If you guys were probably, you know, maybe 10,000 more in population, you know, or I guess for lack of a better word, a larger presence, because like you said, Lapeer kind of steals away some glory from us, which isn't a bad thing, you know? It's not bad, in this situation, not bad to be second fiddle, just, you know? That's what I tell a lot of people, there's nothing wrong, you know, with being the mouse in the pocket when we're talking about "we," right? That's okay. So, I will say this, when I talked to you in June, I actually did have a situation take place where, let's say, for example, Brian, now I had a DPW supervisor going through what was quite a nasty divorce, okay? And so, he had been spending the last two months working with the Treasury Department, okay, to switch over his information. So, low and behold, an email comes in that says, "Hey, I need to switch my direct deposit." So, they have an internal form that they use as to stop fraud. They ship it out, it gets filled back completely in its entirety, perfect. Comes back, my DPW supervisor does not receive a check next week. Now, the problem with it was, is it was $2,000, okay? The deductibles on this is 2,500, so the coverage wasn't going to be in there on the cyber, and unfortunately, because my deputy treasurer was due, that giving away of the money is not covered under your crime or your bonds, and so that's what gets a little, be a little difficult. So, that's where I don't want to sit there and say, "Jim, I've got you covered," right? And then you're going, "Oh, Dustin, you just up there and said it was covered." Oh, like up to like 2,500, though, huh? So, you know what I mean? I want to be truthful with everybody, so. I did, I just, I know that there's some information in your packet, I just made some other ones just in case. It probably is just a duplicate of what you have already in there from Mr. Trent. But if you have any questions for me, you know, I know there was potential talk about the wastewater treatment plan, if anybody had anything with that, because I did have a couple of questions to ask, I guess, in the reverse. So, if you want to ask me questions before I ask you?
I recall most vividly from your last presentation was you explained to us essentially why the coverage... why the coverage would not be particularly helpful from the standpoint of proving the claim. And I don't recall your precise explanation, but essentially, I think you convinced us that it wasn't worth, well, because we decided not to go with it.
Right. And you're not wrong, Mr. President, in the sense that I don't have, I don't have anything to sit back here and say, this is what we'll do. You know, I remember I used the police department as, you know, police department and cars, like oil and water, right? They just, they don't get along. I know exactly what to do with your cars. I know exactly how to help you with your cars. I know exactly how to keep those cars from getting banged up. This, and I will say this, this is something that, you know, you put a gun to my head, you know what I'm saying? No, because this is not something that I've tested. Still, I've had one itty-bitty $2,000 thing. No one's gone into my municipal, I've got 196 of them. No one's knocked on my door. Now, I will say this, when we talked about this as well, and Mr. Trent, like I said, one of the things is I've always known IT rights been here, you know what I mean? I have, you know, what you just spoke of is the same confidence that I have in them. And they do handle probably, like we talked about, 80, maybe 90% of my municipalities. So when you're getting that kind of effort from, you know, the contractor, that's great, you know? But I think Mr. Trent is right in the sense that, you know, this is something, you know, and we talked about, this is something I don't think you can ignore forever, but it's just, again, it was hard when I sat here in June and talked to this about you guys, and it'll still be, this is hard now, so.
Well, and I agree with you. We're small enough that I don't think they're going to, I mean, we knock on wood and hope that they pick on Lapeer, Flan, or somebody with a bigger pocketbook.
I, you know, I just.
Well, even more concerning is the gray area of coverage. I mean, the gray area of coverage.
Right.
I mean, the insurance, the insurance person himself is saying, we.
We haven't tested, we haven't tested. It's not the gray, it's the test.
Do you have any municipalities that have taken this out?
And our book, I probably, out of 196, I can confidently say we have 50. Now, those 50, though, that we weren't even having this conversation. It was like, hey, you're taking cyber this year. Million, yeah, you, million, you, million, you, million. Like, those are the ones we didn't even flinch on them. You know, you're talking, and I'll be fair, I don't mind putting this out. I mean, you're talking Pittsfield, you're talking Chesterfield, Ann Arbor Township, you know what I mean? If I was sitting in front of Lapeer, I'm like, mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And again, you were in that gray. You're not wrong for taking it, but at the same time, call me a little selfish, right?
Well, here's a question for you. Here's a question for you because I'm confused. You're sitting here telling us, this is a gray area, you've never covered it, but you're telling these other people to take it?
Because, because they're a target. I think, I think in the grand scheme of things, they're the target. They're the big dog in the county. I mean, let's be fair, sir, Pittsfield Township is one of the biggest townships in the state. Ann Arbor Township is just simply a keystoker way. When you sit there and you think Wolverines, right, what do you think? You think Ann Arbor. Nobody knows city or township. They don't think about the two. I mean, you know, often it's like, oh, you the township wrong this, what side of the street you want, you know, this one? Ah, go talk to the city. That's not us. That's not our zoning problem. That's not our water line, right? So it's assumption that gets you pulled in, you know? I'll be fair with you, Chesterfield is just too big. They've got a great infrastructure.
But big or small, if there's a gray area of coverage and you don't know how it can be covered, what's the matter if it's big or small? If there's a gray area of coverage and they're paying you?
Because, because for what, for what they're, for what they could potentially face and lose, it would be triple, if not, you know, quadruple, what the, you know, I mean, you've got to look at what you guys are budgetarily-wise versus Chesterfield, you know what I mean? We're talking an enormous ransom. You know, one thing that we had talked about is there's nothing in your books that is not public, you know what I mean? Takes them five seconds to go, million, 2 million here, 200 million here, you know what I mean? There, these ransoms, if you ever look at these things, and again, I'm making a scosh of speculation on this, these ransoms are relatively payable versus the people that they're ransom-ing. You know, they're not going to walk in here and go, Kim, two mil, please. I mean, we're going to, you know, okay, okay. 20,000, though. 20,000 is feasible. And that's, you know, and that's where I think about that. And if it's, when it's on that kind of number, and again, gun to my head, okay, you know, like, that's a, you know, the number of what I'm going to lose, servers, computers, things like that, it could be relatively close, so that's not a bad number to me. You walk into Chester, you walk into Ann Arbor, I mean, that could be $5 million like that without even blinking. And that's what scares me. That's when it's like, you know, here, I'm not overly scared. I have a lot of confidence in IT right. But again, I just, you know, I don't want to sit there, you know, remember Mr. Love? Mr. Love was a hugger and a giver. That man would have strung me up over two bucks if I told him it was covered. And rightfully so, right? We get in this, we get in this problem of sitting here saying, covered, covered. He's saying it all the time. I was talking to a little old lady on the phone yesterday. My insurance manslaughter was covered. What, to what limit, ma'am? You run a trucking company, sir. Do you want to hear me tell you you're covered, or do you want to know specifically? I mean, you got some serious trucks on the road, sir. You don't go rolling half a million dollars down the road, plus, and sit there and say, here, you're covered. And that's what, that's what makes me nervous on sitting here saying, Mr. Dyke, you're covering. And then I'm going to sit here and say, where's my $5? So that's, that's why it is, is just, it's difficult for me. Because I, I mean, I'll be, I'm being a little selfish. I don't want to get nailed to the post. I've been in that corner. I promised myself I would never be in it again. And that's why I'm not sitting here going, ma'am, he's, he's right, you're right, you're right, you're right, I'm right, right? We're all, we're all right, it's just, where do we want to be? All right? I store a can of food and a bottle of water down in my basement, not a prepper. I don't think I'm ever going to need it, but yet I keep it down there? That's just how I am, I guess, right? My wife makes fun of my five gallons of water all the time. Did you change the water? You know it goes bad. Thank you, honey, yes, I did. I just like to prep. This is a prep. This is all it is. Sure? No? Ma'am? So one thing I want to ask about the wastewater treatment plant, I'm very familiar with it, but one thing I want to know is, you know, it is, it is not the newest of technology. So are there any, and in this, you know, is there any lines? Is there anything that can be electronically opened? See, being dated and being mechanical actually works to our advantage, right? New fire trucks, oh, they're great, right? Not when the electrical valve doesn't open the water to let it out, and then we can't put a fire out because it's frozen, right? That's not good. But I'll tell you what, you can get a wrench on a manual one, crank that bad boy over. Sir, again, I bet you've got new trucks and you've got old trucks, and you like the old trucks.
I'd take an old one any day.
All right. No death, no electronics.
No computers.
That's right. Nothing's stalling out. The old stuff works. And here's what you got to think about here, too, right? Your wastewater treatment plant, right, isn't that big of a threat if you can't get to anything? You know what I mean? Yes, we have skated a monitor and things like that, but as long as that SCADA doesn't, for lack of a better word, give us a false positive, well, that doesn't matter either because we just called the guys in. I mean, we've got, what, a staff of four over there? And we all know Brian, he is not letting anything happen to his baby, which is the system. And the guys over the wastewater treatment plant, same thing. They're going to get in there, going to check these things out. So let, let SCADA go nuts. I'll fix your SCADA, okay? Let it go nuts. The guys will be out there, you know, checking, you know? I'm very, very familiar with a lot of the town folk in all mods. I'll talk to anybody you need to, right? They have a line back up, whatever it may be, give me the number, I'll make 50 calls. So when you look at your system, what is susceptible to loss? And again, you know what I mean? A lot of fire trucks these days, oh, you got electronic valves in there? Nope. Get rid of those. I want manual, you know? I want, I want old turns, you know? I bet you every time, every time you see a decent truck sitting there, you sweep that thing up just to put in the back of the yard, because you'll renovate it one day.
I bought new.
So, you know, Mr. Dyke, like you said, I don't want to seem wishy-washy or, you know, talking about both sides of my mouth. It's just, you know, like I said, I will say this, I'm not going to sit there and stand in front of you and go, do this and forever hold your peace. I want you guys to understand that there are areas that I have not tested, that I think are still gray, and that I haven't been able to go through because this is a new policy. On this side, I think that for the money, for a million bucks, for $500, it's a steal, too. You know, even at $1,000, and we're telling you, we're telling you, so for $1,116, I'm going to guarantee you a million dollars in coverage. Like I said, I just don't want you to think that I'm being a snake oil salesman. That's all.
We do know that our manager is recommending that we obtain the coverage.
And sorry, not to cut you, anybody off, but again, this was here just like it was in June, okay? So, you know, if I get a random call from Mr. Trent, if I get a random call from Kim, whatever it may be, it's going, it's in place, we're ready to roll. So I'm going to pass.
I do think it's important. Did you hear about the Kronos hack that's going on? Did you hear about the, did you hear about the Kronos hack that was going on?
No.
Okay, that's what's happening with my business. We're not able to access any kind of pay stubs, paychecks, all that stuff, that was all hacked. And then I work in Rochester.
Let me ask you this, ma'am. What is, you know, so, you know, like, for my agency, okay, you know, my wife has us all set up through paychecks, and I've been told over and over and time and time again, they have all of our stuff. So if I lose it, I'm fine. And I asked that question very detailed. Okay, fine, wipe me out, I don't care, because you third-party have it, right? You're supposed to take care of me. So are they, is that?
No, there's no access. They, we had to revert back to paper and pencil. They don't know what days we've worked in December. They don't know, we're not, they went to a base pay back in November. Any of our overtime, they don't have any access to anything. That whole software company, Kronos, which runs a lot of hospitals, grocery stores, different factories, I think there's like 300 different larger companies that this is affiliated with. It's still shut down, it's been shut down over a month. You don't know what you're working. Well, we've reverted back to paper and pencil, but you can't access your W2, you can't do anything right now.
See, now, and again.
And that's, you don't know how to, you couldn't predict that.
And see, here's something, here's a difficult thing. I guess, for lack, for lack of a better word, I don't, I don't know how, I mean, because I'll be fair with you, ma'am, you are talking about what are luxuries to us nowadays.
Correct.
You know, I mean, I will be fair, you know, this, this thing makes my life a lot easier. And I tell people all the time, if your hard drive blows up, there's not a favorite on your screen that I'm giving you back, okay? You're going to get your systems. You need to go back in and find your websites. You need to remember your passwords, right? And those are the things that we tend to get annoyed about or we get angry about because it makes our lives a lot harder. I don't have an answer for you because your system was breached, they jumped through IT right. If any personal information or anything like that was leaked, we would help with background checks, financial checks, right? But I'm not making that situation, in my opinion, any better, you know what I mean? And I, and I don't know.
Okay, that's what I was wondering if, can you help that if that was to happen?
Well, like, if, let's say, let's say when the breach, the breach comes and the ransom, right? You know, this is going to fall on you all to decide what you want to do, you know what I mean? What do we do, you know, because, because IT right is telling us, well, we do backups every 12 hours. So, you know, we're.
I mean, we're backing up. I mean, you can't, you can't hack into, even if you had to go back 48 hours, you only lost two days' worth of stuff.
Right. And I'll be fair with you, right? I have this, I've got a laptop, I've got two external hard drives, and I've got a fob that I keep all my stuff on, right? Plus, I have my cloud, just because I don't think that I'm ever going to lose it and then get everything, and that I, so I keep a ton of backups, right? I will say that I think, one thing that I'm trying to tell you is that a lot of promises get made, like these costly assessments that they're going to tell you. Hey, Mr. Trent, I got from you that you believe in them, but you also, you know, are keeping an eye out, like, okay, are you, you know, are you sure? Like, so I'm going to give you this amount of money, so you're guaranteeing if we do these things, we're going to be safe, right? And I don't think when you put them in a corner, they're going to say, yeah. You know what I mean? I think everybody is apprehensive about sticking their necks out when it comes to these things. You know, I don't, I bet you whoever handled Kronos, they're like, we don't, we don't really know how this happened. We did everything we possibly could, right?
Right. We're having to revert to a third company to try to start picking things up at this point, but we have lost so much.
And I, but I, you know, at the same time, though, you know, going, going back to the situation, here's another thing, nobody likes to talk about this stuff. You know what I mean? Nobody likes to sit there and, you know, like, Jim, let's be fair, I mean, you and all your trucking owner buddies get together and you talk about how many engines you blew up, or axles you blew out, or crappy drivers that you had. No, you don't. You're talking about, you talk about the good things about you. No one talks about the bad stuff. No one talks about the crappy.
Actually, it's the big topics always insurance.
But, you know, you're going, I mean, the thing, you're going to call upon, you know, Mr. Trent, you're going to call upon Kim, Brian, you know what I mean? You're going to call upon what they think would be best, right? And these will be tools there for them, but, you know, ma'am, you make a good point. I don't know how I'm going to get, you know, your W2 on a computer or something. I don't know how I'm going to get your overtime back, right? I don't have that answer. That makes me nervous.
So, yeah, that goes to my question in this situation, how does having insurance coverage help? Like, is there like any compensation for time?
Paying hours of work to put it all back.
So, yes, there is, like, so already built into the property casualty and general liability is valuable papers and records, okay? So if we are exceeding, you know, our IT contract, you know, you've got upwards of $250,000. I mean, I'll be, I'll be very fair with you, like I've always promised you guys, I'm accessible 24 hours a day, and if something like this happened, trust me when I tell you, I'd probably be here in a heart attack, in a heart minute, because I have no idea. You know, I'd be sitting there, okay, here's this, we've got this intersection, here's the limit here, here's where cyber's coming in here, right? Here's our EDP limit, here's, you know, I'd be letting you know, here's the coverages. I've made all the contacts I could, here's how the best of these coverages would fall, and how we would take these things up. You would be stuck with a plethora of information, and then we'd look, just like Mr. Dyke going, oh, what do we do? Right? And that's, and then you sit there, well, what's the best? These are your systems. You know, and it doesn't guarantee, I will say this, this will pay the ransom. If they determine it to be better, that, that doesn't mean they're not going to blow you up. That's the other thing. You're talking about a potential 20-year-old sitting on, I mean, look at this fine young man here, right? Seventeen, seventeen, seventeen. He doesn't care about anything besides the flow and. Blow your hardware up for 10 grand because he thinks that's a whole load of money. Where, where do you live? How much you make? I'm a major construction. 15? 15, 12, what? Wow, inflation, wow. You're barely more than 40, you know, I mean, forever, right? I mean, this is what, this is what is going to attack. Flow number two, guys. These, this, this is what you're dealing with. And then I have to sit there and defend myself against this. And it's not their fault, they're bored, they're bored, they're stuck at home. Somebody decided to teach them coding when they were five, and they're really smart. Next thing you know, they're jumping in, you know? And if they get your background information, I will pay for you to have background checks and financial checks, but that doesn't mean I'm going to keep you clean, right? Mr. Feldman, you're brand new. Maybe they just feel like messing with you. Maybe they want a new truck. But I can't guarantee that just because I'm monitoring inform, doesn't mean they're just going to destroy it. So, you know, and again, so, well, Dustin, you told me you had coverage. I didn't think that they would, you know, take the ransom, blow your system up, ruin your credit, and then, you know, turn your gender from male to female on the internet. You know, I mean, I don't know. Flow one and two over here got a kick out of it, so that's what they did. Jim is, Jim is no longer Jim. If you wanna call Jim, call somebody else. All right, and that's just, that's what we're up against. And then I have no idea that this is what's behind it. And I don't even know where it is. San Antonio, California, two blocks down. Thank you, John. See what I mean? So that's, I don't mean to... I painted just a clearer picture I did in June, didn't I? I know. It's okay.
I put it with, it's a feel-good policy.
You know, that's, Jim, that's, you know, for the size, the scope, the exposure, I mean, and to be fair, I don't mind selling you a feel-good policy, I just, I just don't, I don't wanna be nailed to the wall. I mean, I've been there, I've been attacked, I've had you, I've had people in your positions tear me apart because of a sentence. So I'm just, I'm also, like I said, forgive me for being a little selfish, I'm just trying to make sure you don't skin me on the stake, that's all. So, because I can't stop there.
It's called reasonable expectations, which is wise, never overpromise. Lawyers, some lawyers have that problem.
The only thing I can promise you, service. I will be here, I will be available, and there's nothing I won't do. I can guarantee you that. That's the only thing I can guarantee. I can guarantee that if this is a three in the morning problem, I will be here. I guarantee you that. And Kim's gotten to know me long enough, trust me when I tell you, it doesn't matter, I'll be here. I, that's the, that's the one thing I will sit on till the day I die, I will be there.
It sounds, it sounds to me, this obviously is not a situation where if we were struck with a cyber attack, that we would be made completely whole, wholly protected, but it also sounds to me like if we were in that situation, we would have additional help and expertise in terms of, okay, are you gonna pay this ransom? Or is it, is it better to address the damage that's been done? And it seemed to me that if we were in that situation, we could use all the help, especially expertise that we can.
And IT, you know, when you look at this, just this brief overview, okay, there's things in here that would kind of coincide, or things that IT Right's gonna wanna know. I mean, right there, security breach response, right? Covers reimbursement and insured for costs incurred in the event of a security breach of personal, non-public information, or their customer or employees. Examples, right? So, it, it would go into assisting IT Right in assessing the situation, they're gonna, you know, you've got two options, well, with this, you've got five. And IT Right would be able to tell us, then I would be able to help as well. You'd just basically be circling the wagons around the fire, so...
So, we're gonna need a vote of some sort. Want one on the IT situation and, well, merit network, that would still be up in the air awaiting IT's...
And action number two can be put on hold, we'll come back and revisit that if necessary at a future date. So really, it's just action one for IT Right, and then council's approval of the premium increase for the cybersecurity coverage.
Is that two motions then, we need to do?
Yeah, it would be two separate, yeah.
I'll make the motion for the free evaluation from IT Right.
Motion made by Councilmember Alec, supported by President Pro Tim Dyke, to approve the cyber assessment by IT Right. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign, unanimously approved. Is there a motion with regard to item number three on our manager's memorandum with regard to cyber liability coverage?
I do have a question before a motion may be made, in that we're presented with option four here, but we have one through three. Would there, I mean, as a way of lowering the cost, but still having some coverage, would, is that something that we should be considering?
You mean in terms of what limit you're about to bring in? So I can tell you this, because of where we're at in the policy, you're only, we're only gonna be able to come down 50% of a premium. So the most cost-effective one, in my opinion, right now is option four, because if you look at option one, which is the $100,000 at $672, the lowest we'll be able to do, it's come down, is half of that. So it'll still be roughly about a 350, you know, don't count my math, $350 premium, whereas we can do about 500, right? And you get a million. So I think for, for what we're gonna be paying, you know, it's an extra $900,000 for a couple hundred bucks. So if I, my opinion would be, please go with option four.
This comes back up in July.
Yes, sir. And what we do, just so you know, I start the process with Mr. Trent roughly about three months before July. You will always see me in June, I will be here having the same conversation again, and we will put together a package and options that best suits Almont, that is also budgetarily friendly without sacrificing coverage.
Tim Gordon.
Is there a motion? No. Say, right, don't...
I'll make, well, first of all, total disclosure, when I originally read this, I thought it was 11,000. I totally misread it. Within our discussion, I still think there are some gray areas within the coverage, but circling the wagons, the value we get from having another proprietor here looking at the issue is worth the cost that we'd be paying for this. So, with that said, I will make the motion to approve the cyber liability coverage proposal number four in the amount of 11,000, $1,119.
But that's, but it's prorated, though.
Yeah, premium be prorated. Yeah, you know, the exact dollar, you know, we're gonna, we're six months into our policy, so without overshooting the moon, we can expect at least to be 40, 45% less than what you're seeing on that paper right now. So it will be prorated, yes, sir. And it will not be 11,000.
To the prorated cost.
Okay. Is there support?
Support.
Motion made by President Pro Tim Dyke, excuse me, and Councilmember Feldman, to approve...
Pardon? Glasser.
Uh-oh, I sound...
She was faster than you.
The wrong seat wing. Sorry.
The white or something over there.
I heard something from over there. Okay, supported by Councilmember Glasser, sorry. To approve cyber liability coverage on a prorated basis, being option number four. And any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. 板式 approved. No? Oh, no, no. No, I'm sorry. Okay. So it is a six to one vote. All right. Thank you, Dustin.
Thanks for your time, I do appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Dustin, have a good trip back.
Folks, I'd shake the rest of your hands. I don't know. My client here in Thanksgiving, so I don't wanna...
It's all respiratory.
Thank you guys so much for your time. It's okay, can I excuse myself?
Sure. Not a problem.
See you in a few months.
Okay, regular agenda item number four, purchase of BOSS Snow Raider, how we pronounce it. Let's make the presentation of that. Anybody? Okay, let's skip over that one.
Yeah, Mr. President, I'm happy to discuss that item.
Yeah, please, sure.
Now that Dustin stopped whispering in my ear. As you well know, back in November, the DDA Board approved our DPW department to take care of snow removal in our downtown district. And back at that time, or even before then, when we were starting to have some friendly discussions with the DDA about, you know, parking lot removal, snow removed from the parking lots, as well as the sidewalks. Ryan Trade, our DPW supervisor, shared a video link with me regarding the BOSS Snow Raider. And I was very impressed by, you know, the attributes of this piece of equipment. And after we consummated the deal with the DDA, and fortunately, you know, with minimal snow that we've had thus far in December, short of our snowfall over the weekend, you know, we haven't really been tested, if you will, as far as, you know, having to remove snow in our downtown district. But I'm a big believer that keeping our sidewalks clear and as safe as possible, not only for the benefit of our business owners, but as well as our citizens and visitors that come to town to frequent our business owners in our downtown district, that it's critical that we have the best equipment possible to give our team members the resources they need to be as successful as possible. I'm a firm believer in that. And so, for what I believe is a modest investment in cost, the BOSS Snow Raider, new off of the premises of Weingartz and Romeo, cost $16,100. One of your former colleagues that just resigned last month turns out in their equipment needs that they purchased one of these items a year ago. And then because of the type of business that they're focused on, which is primarily parking lot, snow removal versus sidewalks, they determined that this piece of equipment that they've used twice in the last year really doesn't fit their needs, and just by happenstance, they happened to find out that we were investigating the possibility of looking into a Snow Raider. And so Nick Giacalone, just before Christmas, put on a little dog and pony show for our DPW and wastewater treatment crew to let us test firsthand this instrument. And at the end of the day, I think our crew was very impressed by the features. One of the big pluses with this equipment is that it would allow us to be more effective and more efficient and use less salting materials, because you can not only salt with either regular, you know, material, or you can use a brine treatment as well. And so it gives you that kind of flexibility, and we're gonna show a brief video here in just a moment, that you can see firsthand for three or four minutes what this instrument can do for us. But I'm inclined to take advantage of a modest price reduction that Mr. Giacalone is providing. And I've had a couple of business owners, as I've had the chance to talk about us taking care of the DDA sidewalks, where a couple of business owners have pledged verbally some monies to this project, thus far, $2,500 and counting. I've got a couple other business owners that are gonna be letting me know in the next week if they're willing to contribute to this cause. They don't need to, but they've taken on part of my vision, that we wanna do the best that we possibly can. And I look at this as an investment in our future. One could argue that, you know, we've already got a skid steer that is capable of taking care of business, and that's true. But I'm looking at investing in the long term, and also giving ourselves some redundancy, that if something were to happen to the skid steer, how do we take care of our DDA downtown district? This Snow Raider helps us accomplish that at a very modest cost. And so I'm asking for your support tonight to invest in this piece of equipment, and before you make a final decision and ask any questions of me, I'd like to share this video with you. If I hit the right button. What do you think, Kim? Or do I need to stand on the other side?
No, I heard it beep, so...
Thanks for your help there, Bernie.
Not sure who that is. I have no idea. Oh, you need to like...
Plug in the dark.
Maybe. No, usually it's just plug and play, but sometimes it's... Can you shut it off and turn it back on again, Mr. Trent? Sorry about that.
Should hit it again.
Several beeps, I don't know. I think it's on. Check it, the trophy's not highlighted. Can you reach it just by standing there, Bernard? Oh, hold on. Oh, there it is.
Smack it, that's what you did back in the old days. While they're working on that, can we have a little bit of discussion about it?
Oh, we will. Oh, we gotta back up.
Searching. Connect to a projector. Computer.
I was thinking, which our insurance guy?
It's almost like this is not working on the...
Did provide a little bit of background information about the product in your packet. I was hoping to be able to show the video, because I think it really helped demonstrate some of the capabilities of the Snow Raider. While Kim's still trying to finagle with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions or some discussion that Mr. Alec indicated that he'd like to have.
I just, when I went through my packet earlier in the day, I seen it, and to get, my whole thing, I understand that it's a couple thousand dollars cheaper than that, but to me, with the piece of equipment, I wanted to know what DPW's thought was, and so I went down there on their lunch hour, I didn't know it was their lunch hour, but I caught them all in there eating lunch. They don't want it. Brian doesn't want it, they have no room to store it. The Bobcat will do the job of it, Jeff has no problem pushing the spreader to spread stuff after the fact. If we were gonna spend that kind of money, they'd rather have the pre-treat for the salt on the back of the trucks to activate the salt with the calcium chloride for the roads. It's a lot of money to spend not knowing, is the DDA gonna have us do sidewalks again next year? We don't have, we don't have a multiple-year contract with them. I mean, we bought a man basket that I found out about today... I mean, we bought a man basket that I found out about today to hang banners and the DDA hired yard services to hang the banners. And we spent $4,000 on a man basket. We have a snow blower that was purchased, used, that takes two guys to load it, two guys to unload it, one guy to do the ramp up and down chickies. And Jeff said it takes him 10 minutes to do it with a shovel. So they don't ever, they pushed it in the back corner of the building. They don't use it. Their words were, if council wants to buy it for them to use, they'll use it to spread salt, but they don't want to stand in the cold when they can sit in a heated cab. It's a four foot blade on the stand up one. The blade on the Bobcat is a four foot V blade, which they can control the snow better than a straight blade. I don't know. I, I disagree with the whole thing on the fact that they don't want it. They have nowhere to store it. It's going to sit outside. If we were going to allocate 14,000 to it, they'd rather see it either on the other snow equipment to upgrade it that they would use for the road or put that 14,000 towards a leaf blow or a leaf vacuum. Because we need that way more than we need. You know, or put that 14,000 towards a building somewhere because they're way out of space. Storage is a real problem. I mean, it's a piece of equipment that's going to sit outside nine months a year and get destroyed by the weather than what it's going to get used. I, I just, I don't. I've never liked the idea about doing sidewalks. It's nothing but a headache. I get the DDA's thing with it. It's nice service to have, but I mean, we've talked about possibly not doing leaves. I would get rid of not doing snow before not getting rid of leaves. Have the people that in front of their business push it to the parking spots and DPW takes it from there with a machine. K-PAC does it. Dryden is one of the only ones around here that still does sidewalks with it. K-PAC shovels their own. Emily City shovels their own. I mean, I don't want to take away from what the DDA is doing, but.
Well, the sidewalks are a contentious issue every, every year. DPW can't.
Brian said every time it snows, he gets an email complaint. My words to him were, you have $48 to do it. If they think six, seven, eight hours isn't quick enough or not being done by nine o'clock in the morning, wait till the next day because you have $48 to do it. By what the paperwork says with the agreement with the DDA. I wouldn't, I don't know. It's not worth the headache to fight it. I didn't agree with having DPW do it in the first place. He wanted all of it or none of it, and he got part of it. I mean.
And DPW and yard services never get along.
I love the idea of using DPW and keeping the funds within the village, but cleaning sidewalks, you're never going to make everybody happy. You pushed it into my door, there's a wind roll. You, you didn't put enough salt. I mean, I'm sure other council members, I've gotten that phone call. I got phone calls today about, the exact words that I got over the phone from one of the business owner was, Almott's in such bad shape, we have to beg for money for equipment now because of asking for donations. That was how it was approached to me and I went, I have no idea what you're talking So as far as asking for donations to do candy for a parade, okay. I don't think, I think all our businesses pay enough in taxes that if we need a piece of equipment, we don't need to beg for it. Or we ask for it in a village. But to, to, to buy something that the DPW, all the guys down there said, we're not going to stand in the cold and do it. We do that with the, the spreader because we can walk it. It's cleaned off. We walk it down, we walk it back, it's done. The ice melt problem that some of the complaints have been, they're using the product that DDA wanted. I wouldn't buy that stuff. I wouldn't put that stuff on my own sidewalk at home because it doesn't work. But they're using what DDA wanted. That's how it was told to me.
Well, I think when the selling points from the manager's perspective is that DPW was favorably inclined and you're obviously indicating the exact opposite, which really brings it onto question. So.
I spent an hour and a half down there with Brian. The guys were on lunch for a half hour with me while I was there. Then it's, I mean, there's the stuff sitting there that was purchased this year that's still not getting used for other reasons. You know, I mean, that contracts, you know, who knows if we get it next year with the DPW. DDA seems to, seems to fight it back and forth because it is a sticky subject. I mean.
Yeah. And the town is too small to take care of all the snow. It gets shoved into the parking spaces or, you know, citizens park there and then fall in the snow that gets piled up. It's a horrendous mess and I don't know how you ever fully resolve it. And yeah, it goes back and forth every year. I don't know about how rest of council feels about it, but if we're, if we're going to vote on it at all, it would seem to me that Brian should be here to confirm Jim's negative assessment of it. And I tend to think it, it won't fly. But how's the rest of council feel about that?
I definitely appreciate you talking to them. Anytime I see a piece of equipment purchased, you know, it is good to have Brian here to talk through why he wants it, you know, what the features are, why it would be more efficient and improve services. So that's something if we are going to consider a piece of equipment in the future, that's, that's how we've done it before for Mr. Trent's benefit is, you know, we typically have Brian here explaining it. You know, Kim presents impact on budget, so we have, we can consider all of the variables before we make a decision. I could, one question I had was that could it even maneuver around the planters that are.
It's, it's as wide as what they're used now.
Yeah.
Is it more mobility? Yes, because it's a foot and a half shorter, but it still doesn't fit between all the flower boxes.
I also had the question on the flower boxes because you can't, you can't walk tandem through by the flower boxes without taking your knee out. My, my other reservation was if we're going to buy a piece of equipment for 2,000 differential, I would rather have a new piece of equipment with a warranty.
Well, that's, and that's why I originally went down there. And when I brought it up, he was like, I'm glad you're here. You know, did they like the demonstration Nick put on? Yeah. Any guy likes a new piece of equipment to go play on for 10 minutes. I mean, take them down there, excavator that they'll never use or a bulldozer, they'll play on it all day long in the parking lot and have fun doing it. That doesn't mean he wants it. You know, I, if you wanted to help them out on anything, in my opinion, that machine, yes, it spreads the, the calcium chloride. They can retrofit the tank. He's already, they've already talked about it with using a wand and a hose where they could walk along and spray it to pre-treat sidewalks, but it's not feasible for what it does.
My recommendation is we table this issue for the, for this evening's meeting. And if want to bring it, put it back on the regular agenda with Brian being here and believe that he'll be supportive. We'll listen. What we're supposed to do, but it sounds like the balloon just got punctured tonight. It strikes, strikes me, I think. I'll come to all good with that. So David, sorry.
I appreciate the feedback and we'll, we'll bring it back to the table in two weeks.
Sure. I'm discussing it. But yeah, a lot of interesting issues being raised. So a regular agenda item number five, deputy clerk treasurer payout request. The only, the thing that caught my attention, Kim, was how much? What, what's, what would the number be? That wasn't, that, that, that's not in the memo. I'm, my understanding is that Cindy was an excellent employee, did a really good job. Has your deputy agreed?
Very much agree. It would be around $1,200. Yes.
Okay. So one, legal, two, is it deserved? Is it, three, is it good for office administrator stat morale for 1,200 bucks? That's my take on it, but anybody else?
I just want to go on record and say I don't like our employee handbook and how this is worded. I, I just think that it, it has the potential to breed, I don't know, resentment and, you know, if one person gets it, we start setting a precedent for, well, this is what the handbook says, but they always approve that. I just don't like it.
And not to be, not to be mean, not to be mean to Cindy, but she got paid a salary to do the job. She has days of offered vacation time that she could have used. And no disrespect, but we put this here for a reason. So things didn't accumulate and we weren't given payouts out. That's exactly why we did this. I mean, yeah, $1,200 isn't what we gave the former police chief one time for who knows what reason, but I, I think we, we put this here for a reason and there's a reason it's there.
Right. But it continuously is ignored. So my experience has been on council.
Well, there's a, well, there's a difference. We kind of the issue with Kim last year that I thought was fair to Kim because of her performance. She's still here and.
And all the extra she did with the manager filling in and.
And they were mitigating circumstances for that. But if we continue to do these payouts, at some point, there's going to be one where we, we get challenged on because we've done it in the past and we couldn't afford it. So why are we going down this road now? That's my take.
And you know, this is not anything to do with this particular situation is more my comment on, I don't like the wording in our handbook and the position that we're put in every time.
Well, that's, I mean, in this case, I mean, to end it with unless village council, it's a cut and dry. How about we just take that line out of there? Take the unless village council says. I mean, it's, was dated back in August 6th of 2013.
Right. And I think that's a subject for another meeting and another discussion. It's just, I want to, want to bring that up because I, I do think it's something that we should evaluate in the future. Because I, you know, Tim is right, there have been steps taken to sort of minimize this impact that, you know, keeps coming up.
$1,200 isn't a large impact and Cindy was a great employee. There's no doubt about that.
Yeah, yeah.
And we modified it in 2013. Was that after the police chief?
Yeah. I believe so. Yeah. Yeah. I want to know on that for the record.
Yeah, that, that was similar to a fiasco. Okay. Well, doesn't sound like we're going to get a motion and then Kim.
I agree with you. I mean, it's, it's cut and dry. I mean, when we did it with Kim, there was other issues around it. Why? I mean, I know she got the extra pay for when she was doing the soup or the manager's position, but I mean, during that stretch, there was times you come by here, Kim's in here, you know, during Easter or whatever holiday it was, you were in here working for the budget.
If she came in voluntarily.
I think she's in this office more than she's in her own house, which.
If she came in voluntarily and gave hours to train, she should maybe be compensated for that, but a payout for unused vacation hours, no.
And I, I will say, I think it's been my experience that it is standard that people get paid for unused vacation time. I think that's, you know, it's been my experience wherever I've worked, not for sick time, but for unused vacation time. So I do think, you know, that's different, but it is part of our policy.
But it's the part of the policy because we had employees that were here for 30 years that had 900 hours of vacation time that we couldn't afford to pay out.
We have included that in the handbook where they can't accrue more than a year. So we don't have the huge balances to pay out.
Correct. Yeah, so we've been taking steps in the right direction.
But if it says that in the handbook and this is in the handbook, you got two things saying two different things about payouts that we're not paying out, but yet, I mean, I don't know, my whole thing on vacation time, sick time, whatever it is, if it's a paid day off, if you don't use it in a year, you lose it. I know what the union.
Well, I guess that raises the question, is this 51 hours that she had coming that was not lost? Or is this 51 hours that were lost that she's trying to recompensate for?
She left.
She left before she could take it. It's earned every pay period.
So she earned this vacation time last year and didn't use it. And she left before the year was over.
Right. And she did try to use as much as she could.
She's not here anymore.
She, she retired before she could implement yet. But that was her choice. What's your take?
And then you have the situation, well, if, if they're forced to take it, then she would just extend her, her time here for two and a half weeks, three weeks, and then I'm out. I, I have nobody. Where Lisa stepped in and, you know, and Cindy has been very helpful in her training. She, she actually offered to come in last week to help me with payroll and stuff like that.
But I think the spirit of this thing is, is accumulated, we've had people coming before us with accumulated $200 over five years and didn't want to pay out.
Right. This is, this is just what she has earned this year.
But it says unused vacation hours that we're not paying out. I don't have a problem. If she comes in to help do extra training, I don't have a problem. I mean, pay her for her time. I, I don't have that issue. I have the issue of.
There are, there are mitigating circumstances. I had unused time in December and the dude that I work with left. I can't take. So there are mitigating, there are mitigating, there are mitigating circumstances. And I'm reading this differently that's just this past year. And in the spirit of her giving time this past year, I think that's a different sort. I, I, yeah, she did retire, but, but she did also come in uncompensated for a while and do some training, correct?
Oh.
Oh, she was compensated?
She was, yeah, she was compensated.
Obviously issues have been raised and unless.
I'm on the fence now. Not on the fence with it because it's a black and white. Unused vacation time is not going to be paid out unless, I mean, we agreed on it. I think that last line should not be in any of the handbook of let's change the rules just because council said, because that's what that tells me. But I wasn't here in 13, so.
Council did make that rule and for a reason, so we'd have some flexi, flexibility. But the basic, basic line is that she'll not be converted into cash.
And this rule is only for non-union employees too.
If it was unused vacation time that she earned in the very last pay period, okay, I could see paying her that on her last check because how would you recompensate that? I mean, but.
And, and she was trying to take vacation time, but, but I have a rule where I don't like only one person in the office. So if I was off or Pam was off, she couldn't take that time off. So.
It could have been hours just accumulated in the end of November and early December.
No, it's been accumu.
Right. But the 51 hours that are left.
You're talking 51 hours, so you're talking four or five days of vacation, correct?
I feel like you guys, I feel this year was a terrible.
I feel like you guys, I feel this year was a terrible year for the staff. With, you know, having to go through what they had to do and they had to step up. So I kind of feel, I'm kind of leaning towards, probably, probably owe it to her.
How does a union contract, track read on unused vacation time? Is that paid out?
Out and full.
But that's sick, is sick different than vacation for reunion employees?
Vacation and personal, right?
Right, right.
Three hours personally. I feel that we should look at the policy going forward because I don't like the ambiguity, and I think it, like I said, can, can just, I don't know, build resentment and, you know, there can be accusations of favoring one employee over another. I, I just don't like that. But in the spirit of honoring, you know, what we give to reunion employees and how we've done things in the past, you know, I feel comfortable with paying out her vacation time. But I, I, I do think we should look at things going forward. It's my take.
How many times have we said that, though? This is the last time. This is the last time. This is, this, this was the last time when it was wrote in black and white in the.
We set a policy for a reason. I mean, I'm wavering, but I, I agree it's black and white. So, so, but there's other opinions, so if someone's going to bring a motion, bring it and let's.
You know.
Vote it out.
Yes, anyone on council bringing a motion in favor of Cindy cashing out her vacation time?
I'll make the motion that we allow Cindy Zender to cash out fifty-one point twenty, or two, three hours of her unused vacation time.
Motion made by Councilmember Steffler, supported by Councilmember Calca, to pay out the fifty-one point. The fifty-one point two, three hours. And not the three hours of personal time. And just for clarification, so is it still twelve hundred dollars? Be a different number?
Nine fifty-five.
Nine fifty-five. So less than a thousand, okay. So, yeah, for the amount of nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. Okay, so there's a motion on the table. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Posits? How many ayes? Two, three, okay. So, I guess that's four to three. Make sure you let Cindy know at the battle fort. It was a.
I'm sure she's watching.
Very close call. Okay. Regular agenda item number six, resolution twenty-two hyphen zero one hyphen zero one, performance resolution for municipalities. This is one of these standard contracts we have to do or MDOT shows up with troops or whatever, whatever they do.
Motion to approve resolution twenty-two dash zero one dash zero one.
Support. Motion made by President Dyke, supported by Councilmember Alex, to approve resolution twenty-two zero one zero one. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, resolution, roll call.
Alec?
Aye.
Calca?
Aye.
Dyke?
Aye.
Feldman?
Aye.
Glasser?
Aye.
Steffler?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye. Resolution twenty-two hyphen zero one hyphen zero one unanimously approved. So that takes care of regular agenda. Is there any public comment this evening for an item that was not on our agenda this evening? Being, and we are going to be heading into closed session. So I urge council for us to do our council member manager comment time now. So that, at least it will be on the public ground. Anything to bring to council manager Trent?
No, not tonight.
Kim?
Sir?
Wayne?
Um, Ken, thanks for. Appreciate it.
Oh, I'm all good.
Tim?
Pete, congratulations. Angela, thanks for coming, coming to go through the ring again. We appreciate what you do for the community and the school board, and you would have been a good candidate. So thank you for putting your hat in the ring. Much appreciated.
Yeah, it was interesting. I think my first vote on council was after being appointed, and there was a three to three tie. And I think the first very decision I had to make had, had to be the tiebreaker. So I have been in this position before. And, you know, this is a little bit different of a situation where there wasn't a deadlock tie, but we did need a vote to move forward. That being said, I definitely looked at our candidates carefully, and it was a tough choice because you both have a strong commitment to the community and your service through, you know, different organizations, and I definitely appreciate that and feel like we, we need some more of that. And so, you know, it, it was really a tough choice. In the end, for me, Mr. Feldman did have a lot of experience that I think is an asset to this board with his project management experience and his educational background. So for me, that's what helped guide my decision. And I just want to say that I appreciate all three of our candidates. Our third gentleman isn't here tonight, but it does take a lot to step forward and, you know, put your neck out there, and I definitely appreciate that. So I hope we continue to see more of that in the future.
I guess the big one I got is with doing that research and going down and talking to them about that snow raider and finding out about the man basket that was purchased this year that hooks to the front of the, the backhoe, I'm assuming that is OSHA approved and we spent over four thousand dollars on. I don't, I don't, I know there's a, a, a limit that Mr. Trent can spend, but I think when there's a purchase like that, I think as council, we should, you know, know about it, even if it's after the fact, for a piece of equipment. I mean, and, and the snow blower that was purchased. I, I don't, it's a three hundred and fifty dollar used off the side of the road purchase. I don't, I don't think that's an appropriate way to buy equipment, period. I mean, if you're buying for your house, it's one thing, but when you're buying to do something for the, the public and using tax dollars to it, I'd rather see a thousand be spent to have something that you know is going to work. But I just, I feel that when there's thousands spent on something that, once again, the DDA stepped aside and went somewhere else. So we spent four thousand on something that's taking space in a building that we don't have. I mean, is it going to get used? Oh, I'm sure. They'll use it for trimming trees, or maybe they'll do banners next year, but that's an expensive hit for nothing.
Funds as opposed to DDA funds, right?
I don't know where the funds came for the man basket or the, I'm assuming village.
Here's a good question. If you consider the, the snow machine that was proposed tonight, does DDA got any money in their budget to help alleviate some of that funding since most of it's going to their history?
But if it's a piece of equipment that's not going to get used to its potential, why buy it?
That's what, that's why I said if we, if we go forward with it, that, that's a question that should be posed.
That's all I have.
So maybe our next meeting, will Kim Shaw be at our next meeting, you think?
Probably. She's fighting COVID right now. Yeah, she's, she's. She should be back in a couple of quarters.
Maybe if we talk to Brian and Kim and, you know, maybe that, maybe that all, you know, work, it'll all work through and answer our questions. I'm all set.
Discussion. Right. Anything else, Jackie?
No, I just wanted to say, Angela, thank you for, thank you for coming out. Thank you. I'm all set.
Certainly fortunate we had good candidates and. Yeah, yes, standing. And that's much appreciated. So that concludes our agenda for this evening. Aside from the fact that we have to go to a closed session. Tim, did you want to?
I'm making a motion to enter the closed session in accord to a section eight H of the Open Meetings Act, being public act two sixty-seven nineteen seventy-six to review attorney-client communication before us for any grievance.
Can I sign this? Who's ordered? I.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear that.
Yeah, I think. Yeah, we do. This is support?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, motion made. Tim, supported by Mindy. In further discussion? Is that roll call? Yeah.
Calca?
Aye.
Dyke?
Aye.
Feldman?
Aye.
Glasser?
Aye.
Steffler?
Aye.
Alec?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
We're in closed session.